I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the time is six P M. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. I'd like to thank members of the public for attending the school board business meeting to absorb the work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. We appreciate the time you took to be here tonight. Hey, Dr. Hellman, we have some items in the table file.
Yes, and this evening's table file, we do have an addition for the policy committee recommendations. It's the recommended policy style guide. The purpose of that guide is to establish some consistency and provide some expediency in updating district policy. Again, this is the first reading tonight, no action required. We also have a number of items on the consent agenda, including personnel items with appointments, increase, decrease, changes in assignment. And that is what we have in the table file this evening.
Very good. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Okay, we are going to have the reading of the land acknowledgement this afternoon. And Dr. Hellman, would you like to introduce?
Sure. So in accordance with a policy nine fifty, the land acknowledgement statement is read this evening as this meeting falls closest to Indigenous Peoples' Day, that is today. The two thousand and twenty, twenty-one District Youth Council's Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee on behalf of the District Youth Council proposed the land acknowledgement be formally adopted by the Board of Education. And this evening, I'm proud to introduce Maddie Busman, who is the Chair of the District Youth Council's Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee to read the land acknowledgement statement as required by the policy.
The Northfield School District recognizes that we reside on the homeland of the Wapakoot tribe of the Dakota Nation. We acknowledge the wrongdoing, both previous and ongoing, and strive to repair and strengthen our relations with indigenous peoples. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Okay, I will take a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Jeff. Second, by Amy. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I do not have anyone signed up for public comment this evening, so we'll move on to our next item, and that is announcements and recognition, Dr. Hellman.
Yes, I just have one announcement this evening. It's really encompassing. We had a great homecoming week last week at Northfield High School culminating in the Raider football team being victorious over Rochester Century on Friday night. I'm, there was a lot of Raider pride exhibited. Our student council did a lot of work and dance on Saturday night. Really great football weather, a little chilly, but on Friday night, some really great football weather crowded. It was really one of those things that we're so grateful to be back to regular with that kind of event. And then one of the items that is tied into our homecoming activities is the Northfield High School Athletic Hall of Fame inductions. And so the following alumni were recognized on a Friday night at halftime of the homecoming football game, and then were formally inducted into the Northfield High School Athletic Hall of Fame on Saturday morning, and it was a very nice reception. And then each individual was introduced by a coach of theirs and then had a short acceptance speech. So really pleased to share with you that Morgan Zabel, class of two thousand and ten, Bree Zabel, class of two thousand and seven, Anthony Jacobs, class of two thousand and seven, the nineteen ninety-eight state championship girls swim and dive team, and that was Megan Neymont, Thomas, Leah Howson, Sora Moyer, Sonia Carmine Zekman, Betsy Allen, Kristen England, Sarah Perro, Doug Davis, and Cindy Boyham, James Hyden, class of nineteen eighty-seven, our own Bubba Sullivan finally inducted into the Hall of Fame. I thought it had happened before, but he was inducted now, class of nineteen eighty-five, and then Reber Paulson, class of nineteen fifty-five. So congratulations to all those athletes who were inducted into the Northfield High School Athletics Hall of Fame. And we congratulate them on their lasting legacy in Raider athletics. That's the announcements for this evening.
Terrific. Board members, any announcements? Okay, we're moving on to items for discussion. We have four items tonight. District Health Insurance Recommendation, Human Resources Director Molly Dieselman and Director of Finance Val Mercer will review the district's health insurance renewal process and present their recommendation. This will be an item for individual action at the next board meeting. Welcome, Molly.
Thank you. Okay, so we are here to talk in health and health insurance tonight. And as you all know, I'm just going to go through a little bit of the history of our health insurance plan. We were insured through the Southeast Service Cooperative prior to September of two thousand and eleven, and then we went full self-insured through Medica September of that year, and we have had really great success with our self-insured, both our dental and our health went self-insured at that time. And we've had really great success with that. We were leaving lots of money on the table when we were part of the Southeast Service Cooperative. And I'm going to actually just take a quick break. I'm sorry. I'm going to introduce George Vanderwee. He's with One Digital. But we've worked with George since two thousand and five. And so well before our self-insurance. But we've worked with him since two thousand and five, and we invited him here tonight to help us answer any of your questions that you might have. So sorry about that, George. So, you know, we, we had really good success with our self-insurance, and we even, you know, we won some awards for our self-insurance. And we have done really well. We haven't taken any increases in our premiums until two thousand and eighteen, when we took a decrease in our premiums. And then that is, two thousand and nineteen is when things started looking a little bit different for us. So, did I cover all that? I can't read it. That's really bad. Yes, so we did, we did do a twenty-five percent increase last year, as you know, and our recommendation as a benefit advisory committee for two thousand and twenty-three, we're going to be taking a ten point five percent increase in our overall premium. So we will be talking a little bit more about that as we get into more of our presentation here. So this is our, this, this graph here will show you how our claims experience and our year-to-date claims experience has increased since two thousand and seventeen. We did have some increases through two thousand and eighteen and then nineteen, two thousand and twenty, you'll see a little dip in that overall claims experience because of the COVID. COVID had a impact on that. We couldn't access services in two thousand and twenty. So there was a little bit of a dip there, and then it's just gone worse since then. Our estimated year-to-date right now is, you know, eight point six million. That is an estimation, of course, because we're not through with two thousand and twenty-two yet. Although our, we do find our claims experience increases a lot in the October, November, and December, because a lot of people have met their deductible already. So that's at the end of the year that we see more claims experience happening. And so these graphs here will show you the blue, the blue graph is, is the current year, and we currently have sixteen high claimants. That's over fifty thousand in claims. We have sixteen people at that level, and five of them are over stop-loss, which is one hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we have roughly sixteen, sixteen people that is incurring thirty-four point five eight percent of our overall claims. And when you think of the number of people we have covered on our plan, that, that low of a number sixteen and that high of a percentage of claims is really where our problem lies right now. We do have a lot of individuals. Unfortunately, it's normal to have some fluctuation in a few bad years, and then you kind of level out and you know, you move forward, but we're noticing in our claims analytics, which, you know, George helps us with. We're noticing that these aren't just one and done type situations. You know, someone has a hip surgery, and then they're, they're done. These are, these are cancers, and these are childhood illnesses. And, you know, some of our prescriptions are twenty-five thousand dollars apiece, and we have each month, and we have several people taking drugs like that. And these aren't situations that are going to resolve with just, you know, we'll wait a few years and then, and we have waited a few years, and, you know, it's not getting, it's not getting any better, and these are not one and done type situations. So that's what makes it so difficult. It's, it's really awesome that our staff have access to such good healthcare. But it does, you know, it does come at a cost, and we need to, to fund the plans more appropriately.
Anything you want to add to that? The only thing I would add, just for context purposes, is the sixteen people is approximately one percent of our total covered individuals. So if that helps, put that into perspective for you. Right? So the funding, as you might have recalled from one of my many budget presentations, for the self-insurance plan is really driven from the premiums. So the premiums are set by the benefits advisory committee, so that is an internal process that George helps recommend on. But the district's paying part of that, the employees are paying part of that, retirees that are still on our plan contribute towards that. All of that is what's generating the revenue. And that amount of money really has to cover all of the expenditures. And so we, as you know, increased premiums last year by twenty-five percent. And we are recommending for one, one of twenty-three to do another ten and a half percent. Good news, that's less than we thought. We were expecting almost like two twenty-five years. So that's a good thing from the data we've seen. It does feel like the twenty-five percent right-sized us, or whatever terminology you want to use, but it feels like we are much more, we're not deficit spending every single month in the self-insurance, and the ten and a half is really in a way to start kind of eking back to being able to feel that it is self-sustaining. As Molly talked about, the prescription drugs are a significant portion of this, based on the conditions that we're seeing and the prescriptions that are required to, to manage those. And as a reminder for the twenty-five percent increase, that's when we came back last year and said, this is going to be unaffordable for our employees. And we used five hundred thousand dollars of fund balance and five hundred thousand dollars of Esser dollars to help offset that and bring that cost down for our staff. But with this continuing, we're, we're envisioning this not going in the best direction. So here are all of the things that we have tried over the past couple of years while we've seen this sort of building, hoping it was just a two-year blip and coming back, but is clearly not. So this year, we went through the HITA process, so the Health Insurance Transparency Act, per statute that's required every other year. We did it last year. We chose to do it again this year to see if we could get some additional movement on our pricing, and we were looking for a different strategy related to the pharmacy that we were hoping to get some better, better bids on that we did not. The pharmacy carve-out provision is a specific provision that was intended to seek out grant or other funding for those high-cost prescriptions that would basically not be a burden on the employee and the plan. But to go to that plan, there's only one provider in Minnesota right now that offers that type of program, and that would have been a twenty-five percent premium increase to move to that plan. So it was not really in the plan's best interest to do that. We also seeked a fully insured proposal, so does it make sense to go back to the way we had it prior to two thousand and twelve? That would have been a thirty-three percent increase. They're all looking at our claims data and saying the same thing. This is how much you cost right now, so this is how much money is needed. So that wasn't unexpected, but I think it validates the information that we've shared historically. We did increase planned deductibles probably two years ago. We also increased the cap on specialty drugs to help at least alleviate some of the, a little bit of the cost, not a lot. We implemented the Amata Program, which is a targeted program to help participants who are at higher risk or to prevent them from becoming high-risk. And so we've, I would say thoroughly assessed the options that we have available. But with our, with our claims in our current population, this is the current reality for our self-insurance. So all that detail leads us to our recommendation. So we, Molly and I have looked at this in every possible scenario, and George, for that matter, he's been very involved in helping us analyze what makes sense. But from the district's perspective, Molly and I have looked at this from our employees' perspective, from the stewardship of the district's perspective, from our families, and what, what is the right combination? So our recommendation tonight is to do a memorandum of understanding with the NEA. So as a reminder, in case that didn't make sense in the narrative, we have, we negotiate the district contribution with the NEA, and that applies to every other group. So that's the only place that we change it is in that contract. And so an MOU or memorandum of understanding allows us to change that outside of our formal negotiation process. And so our recommendation is, we put the specific dollars in there because that's how it's written in the contract language. So five eighty-three, twenty-six for single and seventeen seventy-four, forty for family. That is eighty percent of the CMM premium. The HRA premium is basically that same calculation. We just back off the HRA contribution that the district does. So that way, each employee is getting the same district contribution. It just looks a little different. And then in the spring, we will start negotiating with the NEA for their next two-year contract. And as typically with most MOUs, they become part of the contract language unless there is a vast disagreement between parties, but would not anticipate that in this case. So this really brings us back, because this is our new normal. That's kind of how we've been looking at it. If you looked at the historical data, the year-over-year data, it's very clear that there was a jump, whether it was strictly due to the conditions we're seeing, costs after COVID being high, I think all of those things contribute to that. But it does not appear that it's going backwards. Same with inflation. It's very rare for the market to adjust the opposite direction. And so we don't anticipate this going backwards. And so we feel like we need to find a level that is manageable for our staff and manageable for the district. This proposal strongly aligns with our strategic commitment to people. We are people business, and as you know, and you've heard in several meetings, we have had a hard time filling all of our current positions. We have concerns that not helping to make this affordable for our staff means we could lose current people that we do have and can't really lose. And so those are the angles we have looked at. It's also been a really excellent recruiting and retaining tool. Many people have talked about how, not only what a high-quality plan it is, but that it is affordable. And, yeah, absolutely.
Um, so in my role as the HR director, a lot of times when our building administrators are hiring new staff, and they have questions about benefits, they, they send them my way, and that's one of the first things that our new potential employees are asking about is what is your benefits package? What is the monthly cost for just me? What is the monthly cost if I choose to cover my family? And a lot of those decisions, whether they're going to work here or not, are really hinged a lot of times on that benefit package.
So we obviously also thought about the budget. I've stood up here and talked about cutting four and a half million dollars over a two-year period, and now we're asking for some additional funding. And that, what that means in total for the budget, we're not quite done with the audit yet, so I can't give you any numbers of where we're at or what it looks like, but it's obviously was not fully anticipated in the budget. So I'm not going to sugarcoat that piece of it. It likely means that we will have to adjust the budget. I view this similar to how we view electricity, right? We pay for electricity, and when it triples in a year, we have to address the budget to manage that because it's necessary. I view that somewhat in that similar lens, if that is a helpful frame for you. But really, we're looking at an additional four hundred and fifty thousand on top of the million. So the million would be ongoing, and then there would be an additional four hundred and fifty out of the district to keep it this level that we're recommending. The, the numbers I have in the narrative, the five point four million to seven point five, that's not an exact science. That's based on enrollment in a snapshot of time. There's also retirees who contribute part of their premium, so it's not an exact science, but it gives, I would say, a pretty decent ballpark estimate of the type of expense that we're looking at. It is also a conservative estimate because there is some revenue offsetting that for those who are paying for part of their premium, but I'd rather have the worst-case scenario, I guess. So that's, that is our recommendation. I think that was the last slide. I, I want to assure you that we have spent a significant amount of time thinking this through. It's challenging even asking for that kind of money in the situation we've been in, but we also value people and feel that that's extremely important and that we need to prioritize that. The additional information that you had in your board packet, we didn't put anything in the slides because it's a lot of numbers to look at, and that tends not to go super well for me when I'm diving through numbers and spreadsheets on, on a slide, but it gives you basically what the total premium is, what the board, which is the district, is contributing, and what the employee is contributing per month, and then what that increases per month. So you can see in two thousand and twenty-two what they actually paid, and that's inclusive of the district contribution. The two thousand and twenty-three contractual is if we reverted back. So if we took the million off the table, went back to the five percent increases that were in contract language, that's what it would look like. And then the two thousand and twenty-three is what we're currently recommending tonight. So that gives you some more context about what the dollars look like. And then the very bottom data is a screenshot of a newly hired educational assistance paycheck on September thirtieth. This person had family health and dental, works six point seven five hours a day, all of the student contact days, which is our standard EA position. And so you can see her, her gross and net pay there. And I just wanted to, to show that a real-life example of how this, this is real dollars for real people. And I don't want to diminish the impact that that has both on them and the district's budgets, so. Do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Well, the invoicing.
Oh, yeah.
Um, prior, prior to us making some contractual adjustments for educational assistance in particular, often their paycheck isn't large enough to cover the deductions through their paychecks, and we end up taking as much on a pre-tax basis through their payroll deduction as we can. And we end up having to invoice them, send them a monthly invoice for the balance of their insurance premium. And I, I believe that we would be heading back in that direction if, if, you know, we, we don't do a permanent change for our staff. So, I mean, that's really a hard thing when you, they, they basically don't really take home a paycheck. They're basically working for their insurance. So I just wanted to point that out when we talked about the, the sample of the, that's a real, real-life sample of one of our EA's paycheck, so.
So with that, we will entertain any questions you might have.
Okay, well, thank you, Val and Molly. We appreciate your report, and we know that you did all of the hard work to bring us the best recommendation. We appreciate that. Board members, do you have any questions?
I just want to ask them to explain two pieces, not, a lot of people in the room knows, but for the purpose of people watching. Could you just describe for board members and for the people watching what that health insurance transparency bidding process looks like? I think it's important. It's not just a regular bid where you get it on one day and you open, there's more to it. And then could you just also highlight the membership of the benefits advisory committee, who you work with to make these recommendations? I think that's important for everyone to know.
Yep, I'll take the first one. You got the second one. So the Health Insurance Transparency Act, which is required every two years, requires us to bid out our health insurance package in the sense that you would normally consider, right? We put an ad in the paper, we seek out proposals, and then we have a bid opening, and we compare the proposals. But what is unique about the HITA process is we are allowed to take that data and go back to maybe the second bidder and say, hey, we have this data over here that says this is a bid we have. Can you match it? Will you lower something? So there's kind of this second pressure process, I'll call it, that allows them to kind of do their best in final. That's the terminology that they use. And then they submit another formal bid, and we open that, and that's their best in final, and then we make the recommendation. With that data goes to the benefits advisory, and we examine all of the best and final offers. Sometimes that's not different from the original offer, and sometimes it's drastically different. I think the first year that we had the Health Insurance Transparency Act, we saved almost five hundred thousand dollars because of that competitive advantage that we had. So it has worked well for the district. One of the very few things the legislature has done that has worked well for our district. But that's kind of the typical process.
Um, so the Benefit Advisory Committee is our, our employee committee that reviews our claims. We only meet, you know, several times a year, right around our renewal process. And this is the committee that agrees on what percent are we going to recommend we increase our premiums, and they, along with George, sits in on, on those meetings. We look at all of our claims experience, and we do have a rep from each of our unions, our five unions. And then Andrea Nelson Walker, our benefits specialist, she sits on that committee as well as Val and I. So there's a custodian rep and a but, and then we, we represent as a whole any non-union employee groups. But there's a teacher rep. So that's a little bit about the Benefit Advisory Committee, and we review all of the data that we have, and we use George's analytical data that kind of gives us an idea of the future, kind of like a crystal ball, but not really. It doesn't, it's not that exact, but that analytic data helps us to determine how high of an increase we might need to take.
Hey, thank you so much. Any questions or comments from the board members? Okay, Tom.
Thank you for this. I'm just kind of disconcerting that someone works their whole paycheck just for health insurance. For the ten point five percent increase, will that just bring, will that just more or less cover the sixteen, or, I mean, if we get a seventeenth or eighteenth or nineteenth high claim, will it cover that? Is there any room for growth? And then going forward, will it always be at the ten percent level, do you think? I mean, you, you can't predict, but will it then come to maybe a more consistent and more, maybe a lower number?
That would be ideal. So the recommended, so there's a couple of different ways we look at it. The recommended to meet like our current projected expenditures. So we don't look at it as of today and say we have sixteen people at stop-loss. We're looking at like a three-year average. What has that grown? What percentage increase have we seen? Those types of things. So we take all of that into consideration. And this year, just to meet our current costs, we were looking at just over eight percent. I'm sure George has that exact number. But we went to ten and a half to add some of that buffer to slowly start getting back to a place where we had more fund balance and more control over where we were at. And so I hope the ten and a half won't be an ongoing thing. But medical inflation in general is six to eight percent, and so I think we've been incredibly blessed, honestly. And so I think we've been incredibly blessed, honestly, to have the plan that we have and the experience that we had. Because I would expect to see some of that year over year. But it's very, very dependent on a lot of different factors. But to answer your specific question, we did add a slight increase this year to, to start kind of building that back up. Yep.
Noel?
Thank you. This has got to be one of the more special committees we have to work on because every claim has got a name. And it would be very difficult for me to do that. And I thank you for your work. Having said that, this is hard for me to say. At what point do we say enough is enough? And I say, I, for the public, I think the insurance companies are in the driver's seat. And I would walk on hot coals to get insurance. And I think the insurance companies know that. And I don't believe they're sympathetic to the needs of the people. The CEO of United Healthcare made $2.5 million. Is that the right number, Molly? $2.5 million last year. And I think that's outrageous. I don't think anybody's, I'd like to know what he could do with $2.5 million in, in a regular workday. But I, I appreciate the work. And as I say, when you say the enough is enough, that's very, very difficult. So is, is it sustainable?
I think that our current trajectory is sustainable. But if I can tell you anything, it's that we don't really have control over that trajectory. And that's also why I likened it to electricity. We don't get to control those rates either. So we got to pay where we're at and kind of hope for the best and deal with the rest of the budget.
You just take whatever they give us or uses them.
Yep. Do you have anything you want to add about the marketplace?
Yeah, so I think i- in regards to what you're talking about there, the, the idea of being self-insured does provide the best opportunity for maintaining and, and controlling those costs as well. Because if you think about a fully insured program, a United Health, whoever it might be, is going to have their own calculation for what they believe they need to have for reserves. So they're padding all of the different components of the health insurance to, to protect themselves, right? So that the CEO can make is two point X million dollars a year. When you're self-insured, we're, we're really buying those individual components as, as Molly and Val talked about around the stop loss, right? So we're looking at what level can we afford to protect those high cost claims? And so we're actually buying a policy to protect those individuals. We're paying for the claims as they happen as opposed to figuring out the reserve calculation needs to be. Being self-insured, we also eliminate some federal and some state taxes as well that are assessed to health plans. So by being self-insured, we are providing the cheapest way to purchase health insurance. We truly did want to find a way to bring together the programs to minimize some of the prescription drugs, which is another area that we don't have enough hours in the day to talk about how corrupt the, that, that particular component of health insurance is when members are paying 25 or the plan's paying $25,000 for one month's worth of a prescription, right? So the idea was is to find a third-party administrator that could potentially help us by finding endowments and other organizations that really could alleviate some of that prescription drug cost. Unfortunately, in order to do that and bundle into different components, we were not able to get a, a offer on the stop loss, which is one of our concerns, right? We have the 16, 17 high-cost individuals. We couldn't find an organization that would provide the stop loss at the level that Medica was providing. Medica would not let us unbundle the prescription drug component and, and provide those, those particular plans that we wanted to do. We had to look at a third-party administrator that would allow us to do some of that. And unfortunately, all of those pieces together, even if we were to implement, would have cost us more because we couldn't get in aggregate all of the different costs to be at the lowest possible value. So hopefully that helps a little bit. The self-insured component, the way the district has operated, really is the cheapest way to purchase health insurance. I do agree with you as well. Our system is very broken and there needs to be some changes, not only for Northfield, but for a lot of individuals.
Another thing that sort of goes along the lines of what George was just talking about is in 2019, because we had a high reserve in our self-funded pool and stop loss premiums, the, the lower the stop loss amount, the higher your premiums are. So we went from 120 to 125. So the higher your stop loss, the lower premiums you pay. And so we had such good claims experience, we decided to save some money by increasing that stop loss to 125,000. Little did we know that that was the same year that our claims were going to start going through the roof. So then we took on more of those costs. And again, hindsight is 2020. Had we known what our claims were going to be for that year, we wouldn't have made that decision. But that was another cost-saving measure than trying to grow our pool, saving some of those premiums by increasing that to 125. Our plan now picks up more of those costs.
Can I just add one more thing, just specific to Noel's point? We are also required under the Affordable Care Act to provide affordable insurance. We have to report on that to the federal government. And so there are components of that, that we just don't have an option to leave it on the table. But just another, another thing to add to the mess.
I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to say thank you because I can see the more you talk to us, the more complicated this actually is. And you've been very good about keeping it as simple and explaining it to us so we can understand it in, you know, a half an hour. And I'm sure you've been working much more with all the regulations and the policies and the money. So thank you very much for all of that. Seems like the 80/20 split, which is what we traditionally have to maintain that forward seems fair, you know, this is affecting everybody. And so that approach makes sense to me. And I'm also assuming that we won't be paying anything to the United Healthcare CEO's wages because we're skipping that and he's cut out of our deals. And so thank you for figuring that out as well.
Any other comments or questions, Julie?
Just want to echo what other board members have said and think, and just express how grateful we are to you for your knowledge and your experience and, and pouring your whole heart and soul into, to figuring out how to make this work. And I appreciate that we, you know, we are committed to our people. And so this, this is what it is. And George, thank you for your work. We've, we've heard of you. We know when Molly's before us, she talks about one digital and now we see, see the man behind all the numbers. So we are grateful for the work you've done for us too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Corey?
Also extend my appreciation to the complexity of this issue and the work of you three as well, the bene- as well as the benefits advisory committee. So I extend my thanks to them. Also want to say thank you for including the pay stub in there. I think it's good to see those real world examples. I think that was brilliant to include that because it's easy for us to say, well, it's only $13 a month or $30 a month when we have tables in front of us. But when you see an actual output of what comes in and goes out and sometimes and with some of our employees, nothing really goes out. So thank you for including that.
You're welcome. Great, Noel.
There is a backup insurance claim. I'm not sure I said the word right, but when does that cut in?
Reinsurance.
The, so that's the stop-loss insurance or reinsurance. There's, yeah, three different names for it, probably an acronym that we don't know about. That is at 125,000. So we pay the first 125 and then Medica pays anything after that. But then we're obviously, that's part of our administrative cost. Yep.
All right. Thank you to the three of you. Your compassion for our staff members comes through and we appreciate all the hard work that you put into this recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now we have review and comment as required by Minnesota Statute 123B, point seven, one subdivision 12. Superintendent Hillman and Director Murtagh will present the Minnesota Department of Education's positive review and comment letter regarding the two question, the, the two-question capital projects levy associated with the November 8th referendum.
Yes. So in your board packet, we had a copy of the entirety of the communication that we received from the Department of Education. As Claudia mentioned, we did receive what's called a positive review and comment. That is what you want, right? In terms of there's a positive, then there's also a negative review and comment. The positive review and comment indicates that the department supports the projects that we're putting forward in terms of they meet the legislation and they have met all of the guidelines and appropriate protocols. And so then you'll see the final page of that three-page document is the description of the, in this case, they call it the proposed school construction project. That's the statutory name that needs to be at the top of that. We're required to publish that in the school district's official newspaper, which we did. It was in last Wednesday's Northfield News. And so we are simply presenting that to you this evening. No action is required. It is simply saying that Dr. Mueller, the commissioner of the Department of Education, has provided us a positive review and comment statement. Val, did I miss anything there?
Very good. Any questions or comments from board members? Okay, thank you so much. All right. The next item is the policy committee recommendations. And Dr. Hillman will present the policies, recommendations on policy 630 and 646, as well as sunsetting 648, 49, and 650.
Yes, we have several policy items that are first reading for you this evening. The first of which would be policy 630, that is district web pages. This policy had not been reviewed in some time. And so obviously there were some updates that needed to be made just to ensure the language aligns with current practice. I wouldn't say that these are substantial changes. I would say it was more so updating language to mirror the particular environment we are in now versus 2007, the last time that this policy was updated. So again, fairly straightforward pieces there, but just some modifications that the policy committee is recommending. In addition, when we take a look at, when we take a look at policy, hold on, I just lost my place, 646. A policy 646 is regarding the due process hearing procedural safeguards where parents and guardians of handicapped children with disabilities. That is the specific terminology that is used in state statute. That is why we continue to use what I would consider potentially be antiquated terminology. But this is something that is to be in alignment with state and federal law. So we need to make sure that, again, some fairly minimal changes to this policy, but there was enough to where when we're adding the purpose, we wanted to make sure that we brought that forward to you. The next three policies are something that we don't do often and frankly, we probably should do more of, which is we're recommending three policies to be eliminated. These are policy 648, 649, and 650. These are around instructional programs, dissemination of information about required instructional programs and community involvement in educational programs. And you would say, why would we eliminate those policies? Well, they are duplicate. So these policies, these, these three policies were just left in place. And these really point to an old Minnesota Department of Education requirement. It used to be something called the publication of the annual report on curriculum and instruction. Some of you go back even further, might remember it called the per report. So when the world's best workforce law went into effect, we were required to adopt some additional policy to align our curricular practices with the new law, world's best workforce. And so you recently, actually last April, you updated some changes to policy 616, which is school district system accountability. That takes the place of these three policies. So in addition, somebody might look at a, one of those, well, wait a minute, the graduation requirements were included in one of the policies that were sunsetting. Just to remind you, we also have a policy on graduation requirements. And so anytime we have an opportunity to slim our policy manual so that it is as lean as it possibly can, while making sure that we cover the anticipated areas that we need to have policy and we think that that's reasonable to do. So I want to assure you that our recommendation to sunset those three policies is simply they are antiquated. They point to something that no longer is required of, of school districts. So I just, that's the purpose of our proposal to sunset those three. In the table file, you had something that we're going to ask you to approve called the district style guide. And this is an initial, this is really our first initial style guide that we have ever had. Our policies over the years, we, the most of the policies that we use come from the Minnesota School Boards Association policy manual. So those policies are all very much, they're very similar in how they are laid out, the process that they use, the way that they are presented on paper. But we also have a number of policies in our manual that were adopted by the school district over the years for which MSBA does not have a model policy. So over the years, we've adopted policies based on things that were important to Northfield. Those policies did not have, they didn't follow that similar MSBA template. We've been painstakingly, the people on the policy committee and the students on the policy committee have painstakingly been updating policies so that they are in alignment with this similar style guide. It's pretty laborious and frankly, we now believe that if you could approve a style guide for us, then our administrative staff would be able to go through over a period of time the remainder of the policies that have not been updated to meet this new style guide component. So that when I look at three policies that they have a similar format, there's a similar flow. And so as long as we make changes to the policies that only include the style guide updates, we think that that would really help us modernize our policy manual in terms of how the policies are presented in, in type written and the purpose and having all of those things similar. So if you were to approve the style guide at the next meeting, we would begin the process of updating policies that don't meet the current criteria without having to bring each and every one of those, of those back to you, to the board. Finally, we are going to bring forward something to you shortly at a future meeting. Around every year, the legislature makes changes to statute where there's a whole bunch of updates to statutory references and a number of things that are, sometimes they're, they are substantial because the change in the law necessitated a change in the policy. Sometimes it's simply a statutory reference. But we, what we want to do is we need, it's not a want, we need to make sure that we update our policies promptly to align with new statute. And so what has happened is in the past, your policy committee has worked very hard. When we have something like that that comes from the legislature, we've typically given it the full review. So what has happened with that is because every year we have a number of policy changes that has derailed or delayed our routine review of policies that haven't been updated by legislative updates. So thus you have a webpages document that hadn't been updated since 2007. So the concept that we would have is that we would bring policies that have been updated simply by the legislature. So we're things that are required legislative updates. We would place those in the consent grouping. As with anything else in the consent grouping, if a board member looks at one of those policies that we're updating simply to align with new legislation and you'd like to remove that from the consent grouping, like any other thing in the consent grouping, we would do so, we would bring that back to the policy committee for further update. We believe that this will align us more quickly with statute. It would also allow our policy committee, committee to be more diligent in reviewing those policies that are important, but maybe haven't required update by the legislature due to statutory changes. So we had a few things tonight just review, we had updates, modest updates to two policies. We're recommending that you sunset three policies that are antiquated and point to a requirement that's no longer in statute, a style guide for you to consider. And then also just this concept of as we come forward, anything that the legislature changes, those policy results would come to the consent grouping. So we can promptly update policy to make sure we're in compliance with statute. So that is what we have for the policy report this evening.
Very good. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, Tom.
Policy 646 to align it with the new style guide where it talks about parents slash guardians. Whereas the style guy talks about parents slash guardians slash caregiver. Do we want to add caregiver just to bring it up?
We will update that before the next meeting. Yes, thank you.
And then, you know, I'll never, I'll never get over one space between sentences. I still think it should be two.
Well, sorry, Tom.
And then in this, and I don't mean this jokingly, the same with the Oxford comma. Because, you know, if you, commas can change a word, change a meaning. And I don't know, I mean, it's funny that there's nothing mentioned about commas or Oxford commas or anything, or maybe there is somewhere else, but.
Yeah, Noel, we know the controversy that the Oxford comma can cause. And there was some discussion about Matt putting the Oxford comma into the policy guide and you can see where that landed.
Well, no, I mean, I'm serious. There are times though when you could, two different people could read the same thing differently if, if there's. differently if there isn't a comma there and other members of board who have more experience writing might have some opinions on this too, but I was just wondering why or if it was discussed.
It's a great point. And so what I will point you to in that style guide is I think it's the last bullet that talks about if the style guide does not cover a certain circumstance, which in this case, style guide does not cover those commas, as you mentioned, that we would default to the Associated Press style guide to the best of our ability. And so the AP style guide does not include the Oxford comma, you know, as part of its style guide. So that is where we are at. And I would ask Corey, who, of course, with his experience with the AP style guide, helped us review the document that we presented to you this evening.
I would say when it comes to policy, we use our discretion because you're absolutely right, Tom. There's times where it's absolutely necessary to have it to avoid confusion. So like we have in their clarifying reasons for it. Largely, it's not necessary, and I know that goes against what some of us were taught, even my more recent education, but things have changed a little bit with that. Everything's about trying to eliminate characters and still withhold, remain, excuse me, clarity. So if there is a case where you have a sentence where a comma definitely helps clarify, put it in there.
Yeah, you know, I guess back in the day when computer memory was tight, you know, you couldn't have those extra characters yet. There were two spaces in the commas. And so it's just ironic that now we're worried about comments.
How far we've come.
And I, and I do want to share with you that we do. So we have a hour and fifteen-minute Policy Committee meeting once a month. I think I've got that time right. We have a seventy-five-minute Policy Committee meeting monthly. And we've really learned that we average probably being able to complete four policies if we're lucky. And the reason is there's a, that the Policy Committee, which is a Noel, Corey, and Amy, and then we have two students every year who are part of that. There's a lot of discussion about exactly that kind of piece, Tom. So what our hope is, is that the style guide will allow us to accelerate the updating of a number of policies to align with the style guide. Then the second part of the acceleration or expediting things is this concept of the consent grouping, right? So that we can get those things that are statutory required updated. And then finally, that's going to allow us to dig into those policies that the statute hasn't updated. So we can take the time to really think through those things. We have just, it, it, it isn't a bad delay. It is just that people have, we've really engaged in playing through. If this policy is needed to be, if we have a question that this policy gives administrators guidance on, we don't want five people to have to come together and say, what does this mean? We want it to be as plain of a reading as it possibly can. Because those are times where you want clarity, right? And so there's a lot of effort. These things coming together are intended to help us be able to spend the time for exactly that circumstance. One piece that I will share with you, just the differentiation is the bulleted lists. So the bulleted list say short statements, no period at the end, longer statements with a period, and then there's some judgment in terms of, we haven't put in a number of characters of what constitutes a long statement. So there obviously is judgment as there is involved with everything. If there was a formula for it, we wouldn't necessarily need to have board members to approve it, right? But that's part of your role. And one of your most important roles as a governance board is making sure that we implement a policy that is clear and understandable to the people when they need to use it. And I'd invite any of our Policy Committee members, if you want to share any thoughts on this at the same time.
Well, first I want to say our, the amount of work we get done, it depends on how many pages each of the policies are. So, you know, if we have an eight to ten-page policy, that might take a whole meeting to get.
Absolutely.
So that's really part of it, too. I like what Corey was saying about leaving the Policy Committee with a certain amount of discretion, you know, so we have the basics in the style guide. But yet, if we think a comma is needed, we can put it in. If we don't, you know, we can leave it out. I think that makes a lot of sense in a lot of areas. And I would actually even add to that. Maybe adding that the Policy Committee can make minor additions to the style guide, you know, as we figure things out that we don't necessarily, once the basic document is approved, you know, if we decide we want to change how the indentation is made or something, maybe that's something that the Policy Committee can just decide and not take the time of this group. So that's my addition to your comments, but I have a question for you as well. And my question is, what happens to the sunset policies? Do they disappear from existence? Or do they get tucked in the back of the policy book for historical reasons? Or where does that happen?
So they would be removed from the website? And then they would be archived in our, in Anita's files.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay, Julie.
I have a specific question about the policy six thirty.
Yep.
District webpage. So if we go down to item number five, personal views, and the statement reads information on personal webpages or online accounts, is that referring to a staff member's classroom page?
No, it is reflecting on their own individual Facebook or other kinds of their own personal media.
Okay.
So it's to just to super clarify that a person who might post something on their own personal, in the, in the old days, it would have been their own personal webpage if they had it or any one of their online accounts. I think most people look at that today as right now as Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, those kinds of things. It's intended to show that things that are posted on those individual personal accounts do not reflect the, they do not represent the school district or are they endorsed by the school district. So this is the concept of your own time and your own dime, right? That outside of the purview of your work, people have a right to their speech under the First Amendment, but it is just clarifying that just because someone who's associated with the district makes a statement as part of their online accounts, that that is not inherent, it's not endorsed or authorized by this, endorsed is the term, endorsed by the school district.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we have other policies that sort of point to staff members' use of communication, et cetera, right?
Correct. We have a district policy on staff communication that goes further into this. The reason that we put this on this particular policy, and of course, as you can notice, this particular policy has, because it's about the district's web presence, we feel it's also important for someone who's reading this also sees the personal component of it at the same time.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And I think the, your strategy of looking to, to become more effective and more efficient and more up to date with the policy and, and putting it in the consent and the style guide, I think it's really outstanding. It, it makes a lot of sense, and it's really important that we have those policies up to date. So I appreciate the work you've given to how that can, can flow and how we can move forward doing that. And we always have to thank Anita because she's, she's boots on the ground getting this done. And I know you have heads down many days working on policies. So it, as you said, it's extremely important, and I appreciate the dedication that, you know, you have always given to this, to this issue. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Um, I wanted to ask her, well, I thought Julie's point about the online accounts, it may be worth it to consider it saying social media, only because I'm thinking there are probably some teachers who do have online educational accounts, like a math practice or some robotics practice, something like that. Just to clarify it, but.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's a very reasonable suggestion. The hard part about any of the technology-related policies is that unfortunately, so we've attempted to the best of our ability to keep the terminology broad. Because we know that if we had written this policy, say, six years ago, and we were to list, you know, particularly, we'd be talking about MySpace, which nobody, I mean, who uses MySpace? And so the, the point is that I do think that social media is probably a broad enough of a term that we could put that. What I would suggest is we put online accounts, comma, including social media, comma.
Or maybe online accounts, not online accounts, not educational related or something.
Sure. Well, we will come up with some other pieces just to super clarify that component.
Trust that you will. Wanted to ask also, so it's, it's, the title of it is district webpages, and I'm wondering if the committee considered it being called school internet. And I say that because it talks about students being able to do research, create and present assignments via the internet, and we don't need a website for that. We need, you know, the school to have an internet.
Yes. We'll take a look at that. That's a part that I, yeah, I appreciate your perspective on that. Yes, we'll take a look at that. That part is also probably a cross from a previous timeframe.
Okay.
So we'll look at how we can potentially update that.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing that out.
And then my last comment was about, oh, if, okay, I guess there's a bulleted. Yeah, there's the bullets here on what the webpage will provide, information about our schools and several points there. And I wondered if the committee felt that they covered to post important updates pertaining to the school day or the district needs. I'm thinking about the levy information. I'm thinking about school closure.
Yeah, so we actually did not touch that list. That particular list is the, there were no changes to that part. So what I'm hearing you say, Claudia, is we should take a look at, is that the entirety of what should be put in the list? Because, for example, I, I suppose that you could make an argument that the budget is a school activity, though I don't think that's what people necessarily refer to, but we do post quite a bit of information on our website about our financial stewardship. So I think there's a few other bullets that we could certainly add around departmental departmental procedures and protocols.
Right.
Other information related to, because we, something as we talk about it now that we haven't added is information about the school board, right? That's, it could be inherent. I'm hearing you say that maybe a few other bullet points about some of your things that are currently there that we use for transparency of communication would be warranted.
Right. If, yeah, if we're talking about what the webpage has, it may be worth it to think about.
We can absolutely add that.
Thank you. That's all I had. Anybody else want to add? All right, then we will move on to the next item, which is superintendent operations and strategic plan update.
So just have a few items for you this evening. They're fairly brief. As you saw, each of the items are fairly brief, but they all have some significance within our system. So the first of all, I want to share is the community school expansion. And it was just very exciting to see the photos and to hear from Erin Bailey about the success of the community school expansion last week. So all three schools, Greenville Park, Bridgewater, and Spring Creek kicked off their community school programming with Bridgewater and Spring Creek, having that new programming for the first time this year. And Bridgewater served a hundred, and we're just talking about the evening programming right now. So a hundred and seventy-four people participated on last Wednesday evening at Bridgewater and fifty-four at Spring Creek on, they had theirs on Monday, right? So we think that getting a little bit reminder as that gets going, we anticipate seeing more there as well. The after-school program is also rolling. And I think something important about the after-school program that I was reminded and did, did not include this, but it was a conversation that I was having actually today with some retired educators. The community school programming, the expansion, we are funding with a specific portion of federal COVID relief dollars that are specified for after-school programming. So we have enough funding to be able to keep this expansion for approximately two years. But one of the things that people have asked as we are starting to return to regular after the pandemic is this notion of how are we accelerating student learning? And how are we helping students have, who needed those extra scoops of content and engagement to be able to make sure that they are getting back to pre-pandemic levels, if you will, in terms of their academic and social emotional outcomes. And so one of the things that doing the community school model this way allows it, we, we braid the funds with targeted services dollars and a number of other pieces of funding from the state. So when you think about targeted service dollars, those are dollars that come from the state that allow us to do specific after-school programming for students who have identified some specific risk categories. We have a number of students right now as a result of the pandemic who maybe wouldn't qualify under those traditional methods of identifying students at risk for a variety of different reasons. The the criteria just hasn't kept up. You know, there's a lot of change pretty quickly. So by braiding these funds, it allows all students to participate in the programming, not just the targeted services students. So that expands the reach. It does good things for targeted services students. It does good things for students who want to participate in those after-school activities. And then the evening programming is on top of that. And we just know from the success of Greenville Parks Community School that it is something that truly draws people to our community. There's a lot of places right now that are talking about what full-service community schools mean. And I have to tell you, I love giving a big smile and smirk when I say every one of our elementary schools has a full-service community school. It is an evidence, an evidence-based practice that does show that it can help students who need academic acceleration and other kinds of support. So we're thrilled and we can't wait. We'll keep showing you photos of happy kids doing cool things with families at community school. I wanted just to highlight the committee work. So as you know, the school district has a number of advisory committees. Our advisory committees are ways that we can get feedback from people in the community about various components that the district has. And so as you know, we range from committees around activities to communications, community ed. Our district youth council is considered a district committee. We have an equity committee, facilities, finance, Northfield four, which is our curriculum and assessment committee. We have a policy committee. We have a safety and a wellness committee. So these advisory committees are really important because they do allow us to interact with the public in a number of different ways. And so we have adopted an approach where we don't give homework. We give very little homework, except for the policy committee. We give very little homework to people who serve on those committees. Because what we're looking for is their feedback. We don't want people to have to spend a whole bunch of time of their personal time to research and do a number of things. What my experience is, when you do that, people don't show up for the next committee meeting if you send them away with a bunch of homework. So we've, we've intentionally created these committees so that these different areas of the district present what the current, what are we doing now? What are the things that we're working on? Are there items that we're considering that we'd like some specific feedback from the committee on? We always follow up with a survey after most of these committee meetings to be able to get if there was any further feedback. This system has worked fairly well. We've had good attendance. We've had people who have committed to being on the committees coming back because they're not afraid if they show up to the meeting, they'll be given a ton of tasks. And board members are obviously on those committees. So as those committees are starting to get going, I just, in the update, I wanted to provide to you this part, just to show you that you can go to that list of district advisory committees and that you can see the dates for the committees that you're assigned to there. So we are working on some other strategies about how to make sure you have those committee dates well ahead of time. But for now, I want to point you to that website. The membership of each of those committees, the dates, the locations are all there, and that should help you just plan your work as you move ahead. So we wanted to share that with your committee work. The next item on my report is the Northfield High School Facility Project Survey Results. So as I had shared, we were hoping to have the possibility of having that report this evening. Dr. Don Lister from Morris Leatherman shared to me that they have completed the phone calls. I will actually get, I just learned yesterday that we will get the actual first slide deck on Monday, the seventeenth. They have had some delays in their office due to some personnel issues that they're now getting caught back up. And so I anticipate having the first round of that presentation slide deck to me next Monday. So it will be available for you well ahead of the October twenty-fourth board meeting. And so you'll have, Dr. Lister will be here at the October twenty-fourth board meeting to provide the context. Morris Leatherman does this kind of survey work all of the time. And so they are going to be able to explain to you what is, here are your results here, how these results compare to other circumstances. When you get results like this, here are some things that you can consider about educating the voters. They will give us a full report, and you'll be able to ask a number of questions. We are going to do that during the regular board meeting. And so we're going to do everything we can to make that the highlight of the evening. Want to provide you an update on our capital projects levy information campaign. So we continue to provide information about the upcoming vote. We have done two mailings to residents. So the first was a postcard that simply tried to point people to the website. It included an opportunity for people to come in person to two public meetings that we have now completed. The second mailing was the, included the required mailing components from the state. So we did include what I would call a slimmed down levy guide. A capital projects levy, as you know, doesn't have the same level of detail or energy that a bond referendum campaign might have. And it doesn't always have the level of cascading or ongoing excitement, maybe, that an operating levy campaign has. The capital projects levy is no less important than either of those two. And we do struggle with the fact that the, the required state mandated ballot language for capital projects levy includes things like a tax rate at a percent. includes things like a pers- a tax rate at a percent. And so it can be a come a, a ballot language that if you read it on its own without context, you can easily see how someone might um, be confused by it. So we continue to try, as you know, I, I shared an op-ed in the Northfield News a while back. Um, we have talked uh, regularly on KYMN radio about it. We've made posts in our social media. And then we are doing a number of different public meetings. So we've had the two public meetings. Uh, I included as part of my state of the district uh, at the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we had a full room for the Rotary Club uh, a couple of weeks ago. I've presented to the Northfield Interfaith Association. Um, I've presented to the Spring Creek PTO today. I were presented to around seventy retired educators. Uh, we have upcoming presentations scheduled for the Bridgewater Booster Club fifty north this Wednesday, the Greenville Park PTO, the Community Education Advisory Council uh, is coming up. And I've told anytime that you can get about four or five people together, we will come and talk about it. And so uh, we are going to record. I intentionally did not record a video of the presentation yet because I wanted people to come to the public meetings because that dialogue is so important. Um, but we will post a, um, by mid next week, we will post a video, really kind of a screencast of what the presentation is. So we will continue to find places that will uh, allow me to speak. I'm always shocked when people know I'm the speaker and they still show up, but these people still keep showing up. So we are doing everything that we reasonably can. Um, we can only do an information campaign, right? So we will continue to talk with anyone who will listen about what the benefits for the school district would be. Um, tell them exactly what it will cost, do everything that we can to try to help uh, provide context for them about what does that percent, that tax rate um, generate? Um, why do we have to have it written in language that way? Um, so far, overall, people have been very receptive. Uh, and we have enjoyed these opportunities. I see Val is going to make a comment here.
Uh, just so the board's aware, I am working with Ellers to see if we can get a revised tax impact table that makes it a little more clear. Um, that's been some of the feedback is that it's been kind of confusing and hard to understand. So I'm working through that right now and we'll share that out um, when we get that finished.
And I think part of that issue is we endeavored with the first uh, version of this to be transparent, very transparent because we had been under levying, as everyone at this table knows, we'd been under levying our authority for about a decade. So we wanted to be very clear and we wanted to, for people to look right across to see what were they paying right now? What would they pay if we renew at the existing tax? And going across the board. The problem is that because of that, there's probably five or six columns. And so if you don't have the understanding of, if you don't understand the concept of under levying, that's where uh, we are hearing that there's some concern from some uh, potential or some, from some voters about what it actually is telling them. So we continue to give them the summary version of it, but we're going to uh, create a more um, summarized tax impacts even.
The initial draft is not more summarized, but it's clear to look at. There's actually more columns. Um, I think the other piece that's confusing that I just, for those listening would hopefully clear up, um, is the, the ballot language. We, the vote is on the percentage. So if you vote yes, it is the percentage of the net tax capacity. And I think the ballot language is confusing because they require us to put what that is estimated to be in dollars and over ten years, which is literally that number times ten, which we know mathematically is not how percentages work when your tax base increases. And so I think there's confusion about, are you approving the percentage? Are you proving the dollar amount? Is it, are you really locked in for ten years and you're only going to get the twelve point three nine nine, whatever million dollars? And so I think there's some confusion around that as well. Um, but just so it's very clear, it is the percentage um, that is being passed.
And I think we just never can miss an opportunity to share with people, you know, what, what does the capital projects levy do for us? It allows us, and, and there's a statutory list of things that we can spend the money on, but to summarize into three buckets. The first of which is we use the dollars to maintain and improve our facilities and grounds. So we've given the example of purchasing new uh, snow removal equipment, uh, making updates to classrooms. For example, we've given the up, the uh, example of we did update a Bridgewater classroom this summer to serve as a science room similar to what the other two elementary schools have had. It can allow us to buy uh, equipment and materials for students and staff to support learning. So all of our technology kinds of leases, we give an example of a twenty-six thousand dollar panel sander that allow us the students in our high school shop class to work with an industry uh, standard equipment. Uh, we also have that Glowforge three D laser printer. Again, not something that is inexpensive, but is important for students if they're working toward going right into the workforce. Having experience with that is important. It also allows us to purchase things like the new science curriculum that we are currently buying to be able to align with the new Minnesota State standards. When we did the reading curriculum a few years ago, that allowed us to do those kinds of things. And then the final bucket that we can spend it on is a very specific group of employees. We are allowed to code their salary and benefits to that. It's five technology employees. And we anticipate that will save the general fund budget a substantial amount of money, around a half a million dollars that we are able to recode from the general fund to the capital projects levy. And that will reduce the amount of future budget reductions uh, that we will need to do. And so those are the three areas that we like to share with people that we can use the capital projects levy dollars for. Our estimate still remains that uh, home valued at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it would be an eighty-one dollar increase or six dollars and seventy-five cents per month. So that is the capital projects levy update. Um, I also just wanted to share with you that I, I had an opportunity to attend the Minnesota Association of School Administrators Board of Directors Meeting and conference uh, over the past weekend. Uh, the theme of the conference was living our purpose. And I will tell you, it's like nearly everything else I've done this fall. The joy and optimism of the people in that room was palpable. And uh, we joked that it's a pretty low bar over the, for superintends over the last couple of falls, but uh, just really hearing and engaging with our colleagues, um, just with that tension of the pandemic really, um, hopefully in our rearview mirror, it really changed the tenor of the conference and the discussion. And so it was just a wonderful opportunity for school leaders to get together. We had a couple of great uh, keynote speakers. Um, Doc, uh, Joe Schmidt, um, from KSDP has a wonderful presentation uh, about um, what's called silent impact. And he has a really cool presentation um, about some uh, impact that Joe Mauer made on a classmate when he was at Creighton Durham Hall. He connects how a University of Minnesota track coach um, has, continues to make a difference decades later from athletes that he had coached, you know, a long time ago and how people who ran for him on the track team passed his lessons along to where it comes back full circle. So it was really just about that when we have a chance to make a positive impact as educators that those things can cascade and we just don't know how long it's going to positively impact people. So it was a very motivating uh, keynote speech. Uh, Joe Donovan, who is a communications consultant that our organization contracts with for rapid and emergency communications, uh, just really gave a wonderful discussion or wonderful presentation just about how to make sure that school districts are able to connect uh, with a variety of different stakeholder groups, how to be better communicators. Um, I attended some really great breakout sessions, retired South St. Paul Superintendent Dr. Dave Webb had a session tall, uh, called Home Run Leadership. We talked with, uh, we, I listened to a former prior Lake Savage Superintendent Terry Salo and St. Anthony New Brighton Superintendent Dr. Renee Corney talking about living and leading uh, centered in your purpose. Something was really important. What we know from um, experts in uh, employment, in the employment field or, or recruitment and retention is that as we're coming out of a difficult time like this, helping people reconnect with the purpose of why they chose the work that they did is so important for job satisfaction and feeling like you're making a difference. So they gave a great presentation. And then I also had a chance to uh, help uh, or to listen to um, MSBA's Barb Dorn about perform, effective performance evaluation. So I, I realize I don't often uh, share with you about those conferences and I thought it'd be worthwhile just to recap what we learned there. So I appreciate your support of my um, participation in that organization. And with that, that's it. I will stand for any questions.
Great. Thanks for the report. Any comments or questions from the board members? Julie.
Just thank you for, for specifically all the great work you're doing and communicating the capital projects levy. And, and I know the question is really complex and maybe confusing, but I think when, when people get down to the list of things that that dollars will provide, it's will do really good things for kids. And we hope that they see their way through some of the, the weeds of, of what we're asking to see what it will provide.
Thank you. We move on to item seven, um, consent agenda. Um, we will approve, uh, we will now move on to the approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Move by Julie, second by Amy. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Motion carries. Okay, we do not have any items for individual action tonight. We're moving on to items for information. We have an enrollment report. So, Dr. Hillman, will you share the October twenty-twenty-two enrollment report?
Yes, so uh, what you will see is that uh, our existing um, enrollment report, really the, I gave you the preliminary one at the last meeting and this one is really the official one, right? We use a lot of, we'll continue to update you through the year. But the October one enrollment report is what MDE uses for a number of uh, financial calculations. Of course, of course, as you know from previous uh, budget and audit reports that uh, we will be adjusted over the years if we have more students or less students. But for the current budget, uh, the October first uh, enrollment report is really important. You will see that we are uh, very similar to what we were uh, at the last meeting, very close. Um, and you'll see that we went up just a couple of students since I gave you the preliminary report. So right now, we're looking at that full-time, only excluding early childhood and part-time slash independent study ALC. That number, or those are the people you think of as being in our free, our K-12 school buildings every day. That number is thirty-seven fifty-four. Um, we are including a new line item uh, that you saw at the last meeting about what was our budget projection. And so you see that thirty-seven twenty-seven across the entire uh, length of the spreadsheet. So that monthly we can compare, are we up or are we down compared to where we were? And so you'll see right now, we are twenty-seven students above what our projection was for this year. To be clear, we are still down in the number of students compared to what we had last year. But we are slightly ahead of the projections, meaning at this moment, uh, the decline is not as much as we had projected. Now, we do know that throughout the year, our, if history tells us, saying that we do tend to see some additional um, attrition during the school year. And so uh, this is what the October first uh, component is. I would invite you to consider the second page of the enrollment document tonight. Specifically taking a look at the elementary school class sizes on the second page. So you'll notice at the top, each elementary school is listed, then with the grade level, uh, the teacher and then the number of students. And as you know, during our budget prioritization process, of course, we did do budget reductions, but we asked first, what did those seventy-plus people who participated in the process want to prioritize? And you know, we heard loud and clear that people wanted to prioritize class sizes. And so when you look at those class sizes that we have at our elementary schools, people who have paid attention to this report for some time know that this is stellar. Uh, these are excellent class sizes overall, but we have a few that are a little bit larger. Um, but the fact is that, especially as we look at the primary grades, uh, we really have quality class sizes. And that is a result of the budget prioritization process. So that is the enrollment report for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, Julie.
So thank you for this report. It's always great to get, to get this first report. Um, I had a question about um, open enrollment, two questions. Um, previously in the past, we've gotten an open, uh, an enrollment options report sometime around mid-October. So um, that, that will be um, a very interesting report, obviously, to get every year. But um, my question there is if a family at the um, elementary levels is looking to open enroll, is the district um, placing those students or do those um, families have a choice of an elementary school?
So the district um, does officially place those students when they originally come to the district. So if you open enroll, we do allow you to offer your uh, preference in order of which elementary school you would like to go to. The district has the unilateral right to place you. Once we place you at an elementary school, you operate as if that is your home school, as if you live with those, within those boundaries. So um, for some time, we were requiring that all new open enrolled families went to Greenville Park. Because as you know, Greenville Park was quite a bit smaller than the other two elementaries for a period of time. It isn't that we didn't make exceptions to that rule. Um, but as we continue forward and as we see these um, Ida, as the schools start to balance a little bit more, uh, we are able to make more exceptions to that at this point. So we are still looking, um, we are still looking at Greenville Park with that. That was part of it. We are allowing a lot more choice than we did in the past. Obviously, Greenville Park is no longer the smallest building in the district. And so that does allow us to have a little bit more flexibility. As you know, there was a time where there was a hundred student difference between Greenville Park and both Spring Creek and Bridgewater. No longer the case. But we do have the right to unilaterally assign the family uh, to that building. And then once we assign them to the building, it is as if they live in that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. I was hoping that was the case with things kind of leveling off, that, that we had families have a little bit more flexibility, but certainly understand where the district has to make the final call on that. Um, one of my questions, also my second question, so in the um, eight, the September twenty-third report, there were, so the first page, um, there were a hundred and twenty-nine students at the ALC. And we have um, seventy-three of which were s- grade twelve. And then this uh, all-important October report, it shows um, forty-eight at that grade twelve for a total of eighty-one. So I was wondering what that September twenty-third blip was for ALC enrollment.
Julie, I don't know the answer to that. And so we'll have to look back. I mean, I think it, it very well could have been um, uh, uh, an anomaly as you see that that forty-eight would be in line with what we had previously had. And so when, when we're looking, you're looking at that, so um, that very well may be an anomaly that we'll go back and take a look at. And again, that's one of the reasons I'm sometimes hesitant to bring for a preliminary enrollment report. Um, but we'll check on that and report back to you when we bring the next enrollment report in November, if that's acceptable.
Hmm, oh, absolutely. And then just a comment, you know, we talk about, you know, just, we graduated a class of three hundred and fifteen students and uh, class of twenty-twenty-two, and we have two hundred and seventy-two seniors. So we are, you know, it's just, it's just so interesting to see how enrollment is changing in key ways.
And two hundred and thirty-eight kindergarten students. Though that doesn't quite completely tell the story because Greenville Park has one of the largest kindergarten classes it has had in some time. And Bridgewater has the smallest kindergarten class it's had in fifteen years. So that's just an interesting piece of how those things shake out.
Thank you. That's right. Corey, you got a question?
Yeah, I had same question about ALC, but I also have a question about Portage, Dr. Hillman. Um, obviously, it's been a pretty consistent year since the first day of school. When Director of Portage, Darryl Keller was here in August, talked about some of the marketing initiatives to bring in additional students for Portage, particularly K through eight, as we uh, kept that program for an additional year. And I know when we start talking about budgets here in the next few months, we're going to want to really assess that and see where we want to go with that program. So I was curious if we have an update on some of those marketing initiatives and other efforts may, being made, because as we can see, it's still a pretty low enrollment number in that space.
Yeah, so uh, we have uh, done some, we, we have not, I will, I will say that I think our marketing uh, work could improve. Um, we are, this is an unusual space. And when we talk to a number of districts, it is wildly inconsistent. So you have districts who had as many, if not more, students than we did uh, during the height of the pandemic, who have just dropped their program entirely. Uh, there is a new model uh, that we are researching to see if it would make sense for us where school districts are basically creating some exclusive agreements. So for example, a school district might say um, to another school district who uh, has an online program that might be more mature or um, uh, the other district has a commitment to keeping that going, that they'll make an agreement that school district that is sending its students out would uh, promote uh, the receiving school districts program. And by uh, through an agreement, that a home district would receive a certain percent, still get a certain percentage of the funding from those students so that they don't lose all of the funding. So the concept is, I'm in school district A that no longer has a program. If someone is interested in online uh, education, my district, we're going to say, hey, you should think about district Y. And if the students do enroll in district Y, district A gets to keep a little bit of that money rather than losing the entirety. It's something that we're looking into. Uh, so the market is settling out. So what I will say is that our, we are working to bolster our marketing. We have not done, um, we have not uh, been as aggressive. Um, maybe as some other districts have been. We are doing some targeted social media pieces. So we did that over the summer. And then we are also doing, there's a, a greater opportunity for movement in students in this online space during And then we are also doing, there's a greater opportunity for movement in students in this online space during the school year, I don't have to pick up and move, right? So if I'm attending one online program or I'm doing in person in another district and I now need to move to online. Because I can do it from my house, there isn't that same kind of barrier, if you will, to do that. So we are strategically through the year going to be doing some targeted social media campaigns right around certain. Points of the year where history would tell us that people make a change to make sure. We're not suggesting that people would need to make a change, we're simply saying if they're considering a change, we would like them to think about our program. This is the infancy, I understand that. Online programs have been around since the late nineteen nineties in one way, shape or form. I helped students conduct online programs in nineteen ninety eight, ninety nine. Where they would watch videos online and then I would, they would make me actually proctor a paper pencil test, they would send us the test, they had the proctor. So online programs have been around for a long time. Because of the infusion of innovation in the market and more players in the market. This particular area, it's an upset apple cart right now, and I just, anyone who thinks that they, my opinion is anyone who thinks that they know. Where this is going to settle out, doesn't necessarily know what they're talking about, not out of. We just don't know, right? I mean, I think there's a lot of speculation. We're still learning. What are the conditions, you know, where people want an online program? Full time online program. What is it that they're looking for in that online program? I do think that the location does matter, in some cases it doesn't in others. I do think that my my prognostication is that. Where this is going to end up continues to be something of a of a both. Where I see students taking both in, the bulk of students will take an online course or two. But it will be in conjunction with their in person coursework. And so how we we currently really don't do that with our current portage system, we do it in some ways. But that I think is the next level of iteration, so I will be straightforward with you that I think that we. I would say that we were not as aggressive, I'll use the term aggressive as we could be. We have been more assertive lately in terms of a social media marketing campaign. But think about that, that's the equivalent of you driving a school bus into another school district and picking up their open enrolled students. This district has not done that, that's commonplace in some other districts, so the shift in this is the way that it is working out, so. That's a long winded answer for a short question, but I hope you can see the conflict. That we have about how where this market, not just us, but where the marketplace is going, there are some districts that. Have flourishing programs and they tend to be centered in the metro area. And then you're seeing a lot of other outstate programs that have just canceled them altogether and are looking at going in with someone else to combine for them.
I had the same question that Julie already asked, so thank you.
Great, okay, thank you so much. All right, we have farm to school luncheon at Spring Creek on Thursday, October twenty seventh, Spring Creek Elementary's Child Nutrition Department will be hosting state and local leaders. Along with farm to school advocates for lunch, the event will be held. From ten forty to twelve P M with lunch served at approximately eleven A M and board members are invited to attend, please contact Stephanie Stromy, Director of Child Nutrition to our speaking. School Lunch Week is October tenth through the fourteenth, so this week, the National School Lunch Program provides low cost or free lunches to children. And operates in nearly one hundred thousand public and nonprofit private schools, grades pre K through twelve. And residential childcare institutions. In fiscal year twenty nineteen, before the coronavirus pandemic, the program provided four point nine billion lunches at a total cost of fourteen point two billion. We're grateful to Stephanie Stromy, Director of Child Nutrition and all of our child nutrition staff who serve our district students each and every day. We also have school bus safety week, and that is next week, October seventeenth through the twenty first. National School Bus Safety Week is a time for parents, students, teachers and motorists, school administrators and other interested parties. To join forces and address the importance of school bus safety. We're grateful to Benjamin Bus and all the school bus operators who serve our district students every school day. And we have a Veterans Day Assembly at Bridgewater, Bridgewater will hold their annual Veterans Day Assembly. On Friday, November eleventh at nine A M in the gymnasium, school board members are invited to attend. Dr. Hillman, did you have any comments on any of those items?
I do not.
Any questions or comments on any of those items of information? All right, then we move on to our future meetings, the regular board meetings will be held in the district boardroom. On Monday, October twenty fourth, November fourteenth and November twenty eighth at six P M. That's all the business that we have for tonight, is there a motion to adjourn? By Noel, second by Tom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.